Six, six twenty-two. Select Board Meeting, Russ Fox, Moeblin, Jason Perron, Carl Steinhardt, Ken Stromsky, and Lisa Anderson.
Thank you. Good evening. Welcome to the Select Board Meeting for Monday, June 6, 2022. Lisa's already announced who's present. We could all raise to salute the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Very briefly, before we begin with public comments, I'd like to ask everybody to reflect on the tragedy in Uvalde, Texas. As you came in here tonight, if you looked up at that banner hanging out there, that was done by students of Powder Mill School after the tragedy at Sandy Hook. And when they were remodeling the schools, they asked it to be hung over here. And I'd ask everybody to reflect on that. And when you're walking out, take a good look at that. The doves represent each of the victims of that tragedy. So, thank you. All right. First thing is, uh, public comments. This is an opportunity for anyone that would like to make a public comment to the Select Board. This is your opportunity. I'd ask you to please stand and state your name for the, an address for the record.
Lannister, very, fourteen B Deagle Street, apartment twelve south. Could you please move the stop sign going from Deagle Street to South Long Yard Street? Back on Deagle Street, because people are almost being killed daily. You cycle by intersection. Stop in the middle of the rail trail. That stop sign's too close to the rail trail.
Thank you.
Get the DPDW for them to do it.
Thank you. Is there anyone else for public comments? Anybody on Zoom for public comments?
Nobody is reaching out.
Going once, going twice. All right. And before we have a meeting, we've got about three minutes here. I'd like to acknowledge payroll warrant number two-two-two-eight dated five twenty-four twenty-two in amount of three hundred fifty-one thousand, two hundred and forty-three dollars and sixty-five cents. Acknowledge payables warrant number two-two-two-seven-B dated six-one-twenty-two in the amount of five hundred and twenty-five thousand, two hundred and eighty-eight dollars and thirty-three cents. I need a motion to accept the minutes of dated five twenty-three twenty-two. So move. Okay, Miss Moeblin made the motion. Miss Perron second. Roll call vote. Russ Fox, aye.
Doug Moeblin, aye.
Jason Perron, aye.
Okay. All right. Really quickly then, since we still did that so fast, we'll try to knock off a one-day liquor license for WIC three-three-eight. This is for the National Motocross Nationals, July ninth, twenty twenty-two. This is something that we do annually. It's been requested by Rick Johnson, who's the promoter of WIC three-three-eight Promotions LLC. Nationals, he's looking for a license from eleven AM to four-thirty PM. Jason, do you have any questions? Because this is your first time.
I do not. I'm very small with my thoughts and messages.
That's right. You raised.
Yes, I did. Police chief.
Right. Definitely officers are present.
Oh, that's significant.
And I need a motion.
Doug Moeblin will make the motion for a one-day liquor license for WIC three-three-eight Promotions LLC for July nine.
Okay, Russ Fox. Oh, I'm sure.
Jason Perron will second the motion.
Okay, roll call vote. Russ Fox, aye.
Doug Moeblin, aye.
Jason Perron, aye.
If we could all initial this at the bottom. And Lisa, what I normally do is pass this over to Robin, so I'm just gonna pass that over so that we don't lose anything. The next one is gonna take us longer, so I'm not gonna get into that right now. So, I think I got six oh five. So, I know that we have Glenis here. We have trying to look. The director here. We do. We've never met. If you want to introduce yourself, that'd be great.
My name is Janet Kelly. I mean, actually, I'm a managier.
Okay.
That comes out. A funny name. I've been Mr. Senator a few times.
Yes.
Over the phone many times, so. I, uh, I'm here to answer any questions. Turns, I'm Mr. Barry, who's right in front of me here. Was he only, what, let me? I'll make this quick. Back about two thousand fifteen, Housing Authority Department gave us a flight. And one of the acts that Governor Baker's always signed in two thousand twenty was that it would be a town-appointed board member. Actually, again. I actually am the director of the Westfield Hobby Park. Board member that's appointed by the mayor. Twenty-two director. So, um, what happened is I was contacted by Michelle. What was going on. Started issuing a paper, working on vehicles. Every tenant that is in the Southwood House, they give a letter. Saying if they'd be interested in joining the board, just send a letter to Michelle, which they did. Mr. Barry was was the only tenant applicant I sent a letter to Michelle. So, today, I was, you know, I was asking that Mr. Barry would be appointed. Five-year term. Well, we usually go back to like you know, your actual town meeting, I think, was first weekend night. I'll be back to May. It's either gonna be May, I would say probably June first. I should probably. So, we, uh, people have to answer any questions. Mr. Barry is only, so we're just asking.
Carl, as far as we know, it's a simple vote of the Board of Selectmen?
Yeah. Okay. And you have all the backup laws and chapters and acts, and what Dan just outlined to you will bring us into compliance.
Okay. And it worked out because we did have one member who signed who moved out of town. Yeah, so it was a perfect timing.
Yeah. Because it actually would have been a little controversy with the election.
Right.
It didn't work out.
Glenis, I know you, but did you want to make any statements to the other board members?
I think that was the only great soul who listened. Said that I'm willing to work on the board and see what we can do to upgrade Southwood in accordance to law and regulations.
If everybody has read Glenis's background, she was the Planning Board Secretary many years ago. Grew up in town. Her sister graduated with me, the greatest class in the town of Southwick, a class of nineteen seventy-five. So, I'd mention that.
I believe you had a discussion about that, didn't you?
Exactly, exactly.
I already did it in case someone was looking.
You gotta, you gotta take these shots when you get a chance, Mr. Moeblin. All right.
I should remember that I was seven.
All right, then I will accept a motion.
I had the pleasure of speaking with the applicant a little before the meeting, and I've read through a lot of her minutes as a former member of the Planning Board. I read plenty of them, so I'll gladly make that motion.
I need a second.
I will second the motion.
All right. Okay, roll call vote. Russ Fox, aye.
Doug Moeblin, aye.
Jason Perron, aye.
And now you will have to be sworn in by the town clerk and read over all the necessary documents and sign your life away. And we thank you very much for volunteering.
Yep. Excellent. Congratulations.
Thank you, Mr. Kelly.
Bye, Dan.
Yeah, thank you very much, sir.
I'm sorry.
Okay. Making sure we did everything right.
All right, so now we're back to a request for the land agreement with WIC three-three-eight with the American Legion. We've been trying to do a three-year agreement. Last year, they only agreed to a one-year. It expires on June thirtieth, twenty twenty-two. The school committee will be meeting just in the nick of time before June thirtieth. They're gonna review the document with their legal counsel and authorize the chairman to sign. I guess what I'm looking for is a motion to have the chair negotiate an agreement with the American Legion. This is for property that they use that belongs to the town of Southwick. And, and if, 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 if I can convince them, I'd love to do a three-year agreement because each year, our attorney has to review it, their attorney has to review it, the school's attorneys gotta review it. And it doesn't make any sense, you know?
The wording's not changing. It's just the term.
It's just the term. Right. So.
I'd make the motion authorize the chair to enter into a revocable land use agreement of up to three years.
Right, that's the legal limit, three years.
So I'd make that motion.
I will second.
Okay, roll call vote. Russ Fox, aye.
Doug Moeblin, aye.
Jason Perron, aye.
Okay, I'll keep that out and we'll begin that process tomorrow. Okay, next is a one-day liquor license for the Southwick Rotary. Jason, we are technically rotarian by corporate. We, we joined through our gift account.
Okay.
And we try to have a member attend meetings or a department head or CAO, something like that. It keeps, uh, try to get more people involved, keep them aware of what's going on in government. So, because of that, this Moeblin is gonna say that we have to enact the role of this necessity. Involve rule of necessity so that it's not a conflict. So, this is a liquor license for the Rotary who works with the cultural council and puts on a summer concert series. They have seven dates. They do have a rain date of July thirty-first, twenty twenty-two. It, they operate from six PM to nine PM. And they've been doing this now for several years. It's very successful. It's free to the public. So, it's, it's, it's a good community event. And they have some very excellent bands lined up for this yet. So, I need a motion.
Motion for one-day liquor licenses for July thirteenth, twentieth, twenty-seventh, August third, tenth, seventeenth, and twenty-fourth from six to nine PM on each of those days.
Do you wanna do the rain day, too? Seven thirty-one?
It never rains in Southwood when there's a Rotary concert, but sure.
Okay. Give a second.
I will second that, the dates that Mr. Moeblin stated.
Okay, roll call vote. Russ Fox, aye.
Doug Moeblin, aye.
Jason Perron, aye.
Okay, we're gonna initial this on the bottom.
We want to have the sheet there, Russ. Waiving of the officer part that you do, too.
Okay.
Chief's okay with that.
Would, would you accept that as your motion to waive the officer?
Oh, I'm, I'm in my motion to waive the police.
You second that.
I will second that.
Okay, we'll do another roll call vote. Russ Fox, aye.
Doug Moeblin, aye.
Jason Perron, aye.
Okay. All right, so we're gonna initial the front. We're gonna sign this on the back. That's your file, yes. And I'm gonna give you this pink thing at the end, and you're gonna put it all in there. All right, next up is a statement from Kiner Valley Planning Commission concerning a CDBG invoice number eleven in amount of four thousand, seven hundred, seventy-three dollars and fifteen cents. This is for the project on Northlake Avenue Housing Rehab Program and our community food pantry in the administration. So I need a motion for four thousand, seven hundred, seventy-three dollars and fifteen cents.
For the community development block grant. So move.
I'll second the motion.
Okay, roll call vote. Russ Fox, aye.
Doug Moeblin, aye.
Jason Perron, aye.
We move in this room, everybody starts soft in here. I'll make this start.
Well, it's air condensed. We're hoping.
Yeah, I know. Sure. My nose is dripping. I can't even hurt this.
Nowadays, you cough and everybody runs, right?
Absolutely.
Throw the box of tissue into the audience.
You need it?
All right, next, next up is this is a sign fiscal twenty-two ARPA funds. Carl, just take us through the top.
Well, Mr. Chairman, it just outlines, you know, going back to last November where you allocated funds from last June's ARPA allocation. You were able to save some monies on the wear gates and things of that. So that number got reduced by, you know, from two hundred and twenty down to a hundred. So that freed up some funds. And then you also had stuff held in there still to come for the the water line, which just about completed with. Randy thought he might need some more money, so I listed it there, but that's not gonna be the case because he's able to use the funds in phase one that he had a surplus. Phase two will have never been borrowed. It was authorized, but we will never borrow those funds from that town meeting. And at some point in the future town meeting, we will vote to rescind that borrowing authorization. So it's like lowering your credit.
Okay.
So that'll be done. The battered boards were done. You know, obviously, we're dealing with the roof project, so we haven't been addressing the other stuff of water fountains and purification. So we're, we're putting that aside. So the thing that we want to accomplish here is as part of the discussion during the budget process for fiscal year twenty-three, there was an allocation put aside from free cash at the special town meeting for seven hundred thousand. So
For roads.
For roads, for paving.
Correct.
Because they need to be done. And this is, this, that was one step of it. This is a second step. Part of these fiscal year twenty-two allocation would be three hundred thousand. And then we're due to get another allocation in late June to July. And we could take an amount of money out of that. I think the board's commitment was maybe another half a million. So, and then that would leave the other dollars as the document here reads for fiscal year twenty-four.
And then if we put together our chapter ninety monies, we're gonna be pretty close to two million.
Near another thousand plus. You also signed off and voted at a previous meeting. It's called rap money.
Winter road repair, right?
Right. Right. And so it wasn't quite under the chapter ninety formula. It was more so on miles of roadway versus just population, because you'll always lose if you're dealing with a population criteria. So that's, that's gonna bring you over, well over two million.
Okay.
And, and again, so Director Brown is programming all that work. And we just need to make sure that we have the resources to undertake it. Right now, it's a matter of getting these vendors to come to town and do the work.
And that's what I've been explaining to all the people that have been calling me. That
Right.
That we're on the bottom of the list with these vendors. We already have mortgining ready to be done. We have the other part of Hillside to be done. Those two are in the queue.
Right, that's over and above this. That's another, that's all over another bill.
Right, that's last year.
Right.
Funding. So this two million, if, if we go along with voting tonight, the additional half a million. Randy.
You wanna wait, obviously, you're gonna wait till those other allocation funds come in.
Right.
You have some site visit dates for the director.
Right.
Yep. So the board should be looking at those dates and deciding when they want to go out on a site visit. Last time, the last two times you've done it, you pretty much, you know, used it in the first three or four roads you looked at. Because of the value of what the work is.
I think this time, we gotta have a different lead card. We gotta let it round last, right? So we'll figure it out.
Yeah.
So we get a better view, a different.
If I can make any of them work, so.
None of them work?
Any of them.
Oh, I mean, because last, last year or the past couple of years, we've been doing an eight AM.
Okay.
That you get off your shift, so.
Yeah, I could give.
We could make it eight-thirty.
Eight-thirty would be perfect.
Okay.
Okay.
Eight-thirty, good for you.
Fantastic.
Where's the calendar?
You got these things in mind as well, using them, right?
Right. We could do it Friday. You guys game for Friday or are you busy?
I'm game.
Yeah.
Book it in. Friday morning, eight-thirty AM, we'll meet at the DPW Garage.
We messed that up one year. Okay.
All right. If, and I'm gonna suggest this to Jason and also to Doug. I know you guys have been traveling around. You've been getting the phone calls. I would make a list of roads you think are, are candidates. We also have the beta program that we try to follow. But there are exceptions to that. And I think there should be exceptions to the beta program.
Well, you as the road commissioner, it's within your prerogative.
Right. But the beta program is supposed to take the politics out of it, but sometimes I don't think the beta program takes into consideration smaller neighborhoods because they put a big emphasis on traffic. All right, so you're gonna set that up? Tell Randy? Is Randy on?
Yeah, I will send Randy.
Okay. All right, so Carl, then we're going to wait till the fiscal, fiscal twenty-three before we
Well, to act on that other amount of money. You can still act on the three hundred.
Three hundred thousand is what he's gonna.
Right, okay. You wanna make that motion?
I'd make a motion to allocate three hundred thousand dollars of the remaining fiscal year twenty-two ARPA award to road improvements.
I'll second that.
Okay, roll call vote. Russ Fox, aye.
Doug Moeblin, aye.
Jason Perron, aye.
Okay. We got a plan. All right.
Next item, Randy is still going over the sewer rates. Adjusted numbers with Morris, so we ask that we defer on that for a meeting.
Okay, so that's, that's being tabled.
Tabled.
Okay?
Yeah.
We're going down to Southwick Fire Department Union, local four-nine-one-nine, agreement sign-off. Has everybody had a chance to peruse it?
It's just based upon an earlier member agreement that you'd already executed after those agreements were over and the funds were voted.
Right. And this has all been reviewed by Labor Council and approved.
Oh, yeah, the parties, the unions are.
Right, the, the union is already signed on. I need a motion.
I'll make the motion.
Doug Moeblin made the motion.
Jason Perron, second.
Okay, roll call vote. Russ Fox, aye.
Doug Moeblin, aye.
Jason Perron, aye.
Lisa. Okay, next up is we have multiple donations for the animal shelter for a total of one thousand, five hundred and two dollars and eighty-two cents. Liz Bennett, our ACO, has suggested putting two hundred and twenty-five dollars into the gift account in one thousand, two hundred and seventy-seven dollars and eighty-two cents into the medical gift account. And money has been raised from Janet Snow in memory of Donald Prifty, from RW's Inc., two hundred dollars in memory of Donald Prifty. And then we have Heidi Colonna, if I'm pronouncing it right, from book sales, twenty-five thirty-two, IVS, one hundred sixty-five fifty from a fundraising for the shelter. Carrie Leckie, fifty dollars, general donation, and from the Southwick Rotary Club, one thousand, three hundred and seven dollars from their fundraisers for the shelter.
One thousand, thirty-seven.
Thirty-seven. Okay, thank you. So I need a motion to approve those donations.
I'll make the motion to accept those generous gifts to the accounts as specified by Ms. Bennett.
I'll second the motion.
Okay, roll call vote. Russ Fox, aye.
Doug Moeblin, aye.
Jason Perron, aye.
Okay, let's sign this on the outside.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, ma'am.
Yes, sir. On the next item, I just wanna go on record that I will be stepping aside from the board for all discussion regarding that.
Okay.
Next.
Okay.
Vice President.
I don't think there's any need for you to leave the room. You've declared that, and I think you're gonna not take part in any.
On the city or silent.
There you go. This is a, a letter from Walla computer associates. I'm not gonna read the whole thing. It's come from its president, Michael T. Sheehan, who is asking the town of Southwick to consider a TIF agreement, tax incentive financing agreement with the town in the Commonwealth of Massachusetts to benefit the town and Walla Computer Associates. We did do a TIF years ago when Walla Computer was looking to move out of town. And we were very successful in retaining them and their employees, and they have since grown to be one of the more successful businesses in Western Massachusetts. So this would be something that would need to be negotiated and then brought to a town meeting for approval of the voters. So you can't say a word.
I, I'm familiar with tests.
Okay.
I did read all this stuff, so.
Okay.
Yeah, I do.
Okay. Because of the past election and quid pro quo, I'm gonna suggest that I make the motion and that you second because we don't want any problems.
Okay.
Okay. I'd make a motion authorizing the chair and the CAO to work with the Commonwealth of Massachusetts in looking at a possible agreement with Walla Computer Associates.
I'll second the motion.
Okay, roll call vote. Russ Fox, aye.
Jason Perron, aye.
Doug Moeblin will abstain.
Okay. Lisa. All right, next thing is to approve Town Beach seasonal staff and
You and I already did that.
Right, under the, the agreement that we had, the chair can sign off on that. I've already signed off on it. And there are some local younger people that are going to be doing that, and hopefully more will apply.
Exactly, we want to make sure we get our beach staff and ready to go with our park and rec directors.
There you go. Okay. Moving on to new business. We have a letter from the Master Plan Advisory Committee, Mr. Phelps. We had sent over that, a letter concerning day breaks that, that was, came into the select board. You familiar at all with it, Jason?
With the North Pond thing?
No, 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 this was.
Just a little.
Okay. It's.
Somehow I'm disorganized myself here on matter to serve.
The gentleman had come in front of the, this board requesting that we look at engine braking, a potential local bylaw regarding that, and we queried Mr. Ballencourt, if I'm pronouncing his name correctly. And his concern had arisen primarily out of a project that had been on a piece of land on North College Highway at Tannery Road, which did not come to any further than an application for the planning board. So this board had then sent this back to the master plan committee to put in as far as potential after the master plan type of implementation type stuff.
Which still can happen.
Which still could happen, but the planning board, or the master plan is kind of kicking it back going, look, that's two years away at least if you want to take any action before then.
We didn't take.
Did I summarize that right?
Yes, you did. We didn't take any action because when we met with the safety officer and the police chief, the request was just for, I think, two roads.
Okay.
In town. And, and the safety officer said, there was no issue at this time. And then the, the chief police was questioning, well, you know, the confusion of just doing it for two roads. So that's why we sent it over to the master plant to see if they wanted to review it and look at it for, if you're going to do it, do it for the whole town. So that's, you know, as a police officer, there's not so much.
Yeah, we've got different coordinators in different spots, similar.
Right, that's right. So. I, I don't know, what's, what's the pleasure of the board?
Based on the feedback from the, the safety officer at the time, and especially regarding the use of some of these devices as a safety device, and we have a singular complaint or request for this so far, I'd make a motion to table it at this time, and if anyone has any further input on it, feel free to contact the select board, we'd be glad to bring it right back up again. It's not something we have to put down and never touch again.
Right.
But I haven't heard an overwhelming amount of complaints or, or issues with this.
Well, the police chief said there has been no complaints.
Okay. And so, and I've heard none directly on this or, or from any constituents, so I'd make a motion to table for the time being.
I'll second the motion.
Okay, roll call vote, Russ Fox, aye?
Doug Mowgli, aye.
Jason Perron, aye.
Let's. Lisa. All right, the only other thing that that I have under new business is I've reached out to the chair of the Southwick Regional School Board, and he's going to be talking to his committee tomorrow to have a get together with the police chief and other security people to go over different security measures. Obviously, this is something we don't want to really do in public because of security concerns. So I guess I'm looking for the board's blessing to, to begin that process.
Need a motion or just a nodding of the head?
I think a nodding of the head is.
Absolutely.
Sure.
Okay. And I'll report back to you. You know, in the future, and maybe we'll, we'll do it in the executive session. Okay? Mr. Steinhardt, new business?
Let's see, the chiefs and I met with Westfield City officials last week, the mayor and the chiefs of command staff on the regional dispatch project, so that's still continuing, still pursuing the appropriate bids to outfit the facility to accommodate what it would need to accommodate for, to take on Southwick's role. How that schedule's going to work, so it's, it's underway and we're still meeting quarterly and, you know, hopefully in a future meeting, we'll have a report back to the board.
Questions from the board?
None.
Okay. Mr. Mowgli? Any new business?
Nothing under new business.
What's the procedure?
New business, anything?
Something I would be concerned with?
All right, an action item or, you know, something.
On the action item, we didn't, I don't know if, if, or, I think, but with the TIF, one of the things that had been brought to my attention was, and it may be the wrong purview for this, is there's a, a some sort of tax discrepancy with the impervious sources. I reached out to Sue Board to try and understand what was going on here. But I haven't gotten any information back from her yet, so I just, I just wanted to mention that. I'm, I'm all for a TIF with, with Wally, I understand how they work and we want to keep Wally here in town. It was just a concern of mine that was brought up to me, so.
Why don't you keep me in loop on that?
I will.
Okay, you know, whatever the concern was.
I sent her an email, I, I spoke to her assistant this afternoon before, and she never, they were busy, they had, everything happened today, bad day.
Okay.
Yeah, some of that stuff, the planner might also have a. It's, it's, so it's just unknown, it doesn't, it's weird. Right, so it's. But they're going to stop their site plan approval tomorrow night in storm water, so the planner and the public works department may actually be able to also wait. And I'm actually going to.
All right, any other new business? Okay, we're going to old business. Old business, North Pond violations, waiting for fishing game agreement development, make sure that we're coming into compliance. Next, we have the town hall HVAC design work, it's almost completed.
Of course, the, the field staff were out here last week reviewing the buildings again to finalize the types of units, the best approach to it, and, you know, also units that, if we go to two smaller units, it might help us secure them sooner because there's a longer lead time unit. Lead time because of the larger units being installed in other places, so scheduling is important, but the actual roof contract, that stuff has already been gone to the that other contractor, and they're working on contract documents with the architect, our office in the town attorney.
Okay. Summer schedule, everybody got a chance to peruse it, no problems?
None on my end.
No conflicts?
Nope.
Okay, it's, and Jason, if during the course of this, something happens unexpected where we need to modify it, feel free to say, geez, I, I'm going to be out of town that week, can we switch that around?
Sounds good.
Okay?
I get no such a commentations, sir.
I thought you, I thought you already knew that. Yeah, in, in March, you're going to learn about another rule. A national holiday rule.
Oh, boy.
So, but you'll learn about that in March.
Oh, okay. I don't know, it's fifty-five percent Irish.
Then, then you're not going to have any problems with that rule.
I do have.
All right. Next, sewer system, IMA, city of Westfield update.
I have still a whole aim for it.
Okay. All right. Board and committee procedures to notify and appoint members in process.
Doug has all of those materials in front of him that in detail lays out all the letters that have gone out and stuff that's coming in and so forth.
So I've met with the town clerk, met with Robin. We've sent out a letter to all of the board and commission chairs notifying them of positions that are up for appointment for fiscal year twenty-three. We've also sent a letter to each and every person on those committees that are up for appointment at the same time and asked them to submit a letter of interest for a position on that commission or any other commission for that matter. And what I'm looking for from the board tonight is permission to post this list, the abbreviated version of this list of all of the positions that will, that are up for appointment for July one on the town website. So, you know, we've been looking for people to come out for boards that are not fully fully staffed and for anyone who has an interest in serving the town, so we, I'd like to continue that drive and by putting that on the town website, hopefully to get some more potential new members to come up for these boards and commissions.
Do we also want to send it to the local news media?
That'd be a great idea, Mr. Chair.
Anything else, Mr. Mowgli?
That's it for appointments.
Could, could I make a suggestion?
Of course.
That for our next meeting, if we properly post the police, fire, and emergency management, that we could resolve those three next week.
That's a great idea.
I'm not sure we received the emergency, did we receive the emergency?
No, we got.
Okay.
Police and fire.
Right.
So, and according to Attorney General's office, we don't have to list every name on the agenda, we just have to make it aware that it's available at the town clerk's office.
You can attach it.
And attach it.
Yes.
Okay. All right, so if we can do that, that takes care of that, and if emergency management happens to get in before next Monday, we could add that too, and, and that would lighten our load. Is that okay with everybody?
I'm going to follow your lead.
Okay, good man. All right. Next thing is deputy chief recruitment process. And we said we were going to start this during the summer.
The chief and I have been working on that. Most things are going out, and we're also in the budget process, there was support for an assessment center, so we're working with firms that are known through the Fire Chiefs Association.
Okay, we have the fire chief here, did you want to add anything, Russ?
It's pretty much the accurate report. Except one budget item back.
Okay. All right. Sounds good.
Mr. Chairman, I think, you know, one thing that I'd like to see is, I certainly want to have the fire department, obviously get a, a strong new deputy chief. Obviously, we're seeing how we're trying to set up the bench here, and I, you know, I, I personally have a preference to take the long look through the whole process and give additional weight possible to any Southwick Fire personnel that apply, that are, that meet all of the qualifications to, to give them a leg up during the process. Are we going to form a review committee like we did for the fire chief years ago, or has this, do you have a feel for that process yet?
Well, the, the board has a standing authorization that, that they designated one of their members to handle all personnel actions below department head level, this falls under. So unless it wants to modify that understanding, it could do that, but it, it'll have to follow the whole other process with the open meeting law. But it would be something different than the process we did before.
But I think you, what you're getting at is the, the, we're, we had a pre-screening committee who then.
For chief.
Right. Okay.
You just didn't do it before.
Okay, I see what you're saying.
And you have time to decide whether you.
No, I'm putting it out there for discussion, we can bring it up at our next meeting, we've got plenty of runway to do it.
Right, you've got some time.
You know, when we did the fire chief, I think it was myself, Carl, police chief, Arthur Pennell. Might have been it, right? Art's a big guy, but no, yeah, I mean, it was.
That was for the chief process.
Correct, and then the, that subcommittee or search committee sent the top three, so there really was only.
Four.
Yeah, but there was really only one, really, when you think about it.
On the deputy's process for review resumes, those best candidates that match the job description assessment center of the day, those top scores, three stop top scores.
So the board could get the final.
We had to be internal candidates.
No, I don't believe. But you hadn't really developed and established command positions like you started to consider that will rise to the bench.
No, great, but, you know, just by vision, right, we've done a good job on the, on the police side, and now the fireside, as we've committed all these resources and personnel to growing that department, I'd love to see that. I hate to call it a conga line, but that's what we call it on the police side, right, is, you know, as, you know, to grow from within, right? It, it, it does a great service to, to the town, so I defer to the chair, it, it's certainly within his purview to decide however, and we can discuss it further next week, that's, or next meeting.
That's always suggest it. And make sure that we're all on the same.
Absolutely.
You know, because it is a very important position, and we were very fortunate to get Chief Anderson to come back to Southwick, he finally realized coming home was the best choice. You already used the other line once. I, I had it come from somewhere. I, you already used it once, and then he hit me with it, it's just.
Wrong.
You don't think I'd do it twice in a meeting, no, but I didn't realize that you guys have rehearsed.
High school graduates. There's a definitive tone I'm starting to see.
I, I, I feel insulted that you people think that I would mention that he graduated with the greatest class.
Nineteen seventy-five from Southwick High School.
Mr. Perron and I have tremendous respect. We have tremendous respect for our elders, so we'll let it go.
Oh.
He said it, not me.
My husband was in that class as well.
And we respect him too. All right. Citizen awareness of board and committee openings, we, we've covered that.
Yep, we kind of talked about that.
Yeah.
Okay, old business, Mr. Steinhardt?
Uh, nothing right now.
Mr. Mowgli? High-speed internet sub has a scheduled meeting. It's next Thursday evening, seven o'clock in the auditorium, because it is such a big sub, we're going to meet over there. Westfield G and E is coming in to kind of give us an update and a presentation.
And that's Whip City Fiber product?
Yes, Whip City Fiber.
Sort of the same stuff they're doing for the town of West Springfield?
Potentially. You're doing something over there?
Parallels of making.
Correct.
Palatable.
Yep, and Agom's going a little bit different direction, so we'll kind of ask them about that as well, because I'm sure they were involved in the discussions in that. So it should be an interesting meeting, it'd be good to finally get that band back together. North Pond, I saw a communication for increased patrol presence over there, because I think there's having continued issues over there, which is rather unfortunate, so hopefully tell all your friends, behave yourself over there. It, it's a great place, I want to see everybody enjoy it and leave it how they found it, would be a great practice over there. Master plan sub met last week again, that we did get out because thank you for the Celtics for playing, which got us out of the meeting at a reasonable hour. And we have completed the survey, the digital survey part, I think the paper one should be soon to follow, but that's going to be going out and they'll be doing some press and advocacy to try to get that into the hands of as many people as possible, to try to fill that survey out to give the master plan advisory committee some guidance on what to do next. So that's good. And the other thing that I wanted to bring back up that had kind of fallen off, I had brought it up several months ago, and I, I forgot to follow up, was there was a, we, and, and what brought it up tonight was the Rotary Concert Series. We authorized several one-day liquor license approvals for an event by a nonprofit at Wally Park, but there had been a request from the park and rec senior director to have a look at if we have any appetite at all to have any permitting for some type of one-day license when someone rents the pavilion. some type of one-day license when someone rents the pavilion, say a family reunion or a large event, if that's something we would even have a palette for. And remember, we agreed to put it on the agenda for future discussion, and I think it kind of fell off the radar. I think we, I also asked that we set up a meeting with the police, fire, town council.
None of them are all available in that short period of time. We couldn't get all of them to agree on the date and time.
Perfect, so I'll just bring it back up to, maybe we can put that all together at one of these years before we all retire. Why don't we shoot for sometime in June or early July? I know Mr. Mogul hates it when I say a work session. You know, so it might be on a different night than a Monday. Where we can spend some time and have some frank conversations on how it would work, if, if, if in fact we did have any appetite for it. If there are concerns.
Absolutely.
All right, so that would be park and rec, police and fire.
Right, and town council.
One last thing I forgot. I just wanted to go back on appointments. Can we coordinate a joint meeting of the planning board and this board for the appointment of the associate member?
Mr. Goddard and I spoke about that, and we're waiting to, I mean, obviously, you're, I gave him your next two meetings, the 13th and the 27th, so I'm waiting to get back to him on that other board choosing a date to come in on.
Correct, because I just know they've got a heavy schedule through the summer.
Yeah.
And with summer, they tend to lose a member or two for certain things, so the associate's important, so continuity of service there would be relative to get that appointment going. And it is a joint appointment of the two boards.
Right. It's usually with formality. It's never been an issue if all five members didn't show up for that board.
Correct. So they usually, yeah, sometimes they even vote and send a proxy.
That's, this is the agenda that.
Correct, I just want to carry that under old business to get that with all the other appointments. That's it.
Perron?
Again, I'm going to follow everybody else's lead.
Okay.
That's good.
I had two things, you know, I mentioned it at the last meeting. I'd like to get the Tyne-Bon report so that we can review that on a regular basis. And the other thing.
Well, it's kind of thick. I mean, it is online.
Right, but I mean, just so that we could. Maybe if we could just pull out the page where it gives the listing of different projects and.
There's plenty of spreadsheets.
Right, right. The spreadsheet would be fine, just so that we can review it, look at it, and start planning. Because we know we're doing the town hall roof this year, next year, most likely it's the police roof. Then we have to go on to the next project. So we might as well start planning on it now. And the other thing I had was the Memorial Day ceremony at the Green. It was fairly well-attended. Band had their beautiful new uniforms. They might be a little too hot for hot weather. We did have a few people that might have got a little overheated. But more importantly, the Southwood Civic Fund was there with drawings of the proposal to redo the landscaping at the Green. The drawings look beautiful. Thank you to Tynick Landscaping for doing the design. It's, they've collected quite a bit of money to begin the process, so it's it's not going to be done in one year, but it's, it's, once it's done, it's going to be really an asset to the center of our community, you know?
Mr. Liggins, I was called.
Busy. Thank him very much. All right, that's all I have for old business. Is there anything else? If not, we will be going into executive session, not to reconvene. To go into executive session pursuant to Mass General Laws, Chapter C, 30A, Section 21, 2 and 3, Chapter 214, Section 1B. Southwood Fire Department Chief Anderson regarding collective bargaining strategy with Local 4919 Firefighters Unit. Executive session regarding Mass General Laws, Chapter C, 30A, Section 21, 2 and 3, Chapter 214, Section 1B, and exception two, move to go in executive session to conduct collective bargaining session with non-union personnel to not to reconvene in the open session. Move to go in executive session to conduct contract negotiation with non-union personnel and to not reconvene in open session. Declare that an open meeting may have detrimental effect on the bargaining position of body and not to reconvene in open session. Exception three, move to go in executive session to discuss strategy, respect to sessions in preparation for negotiations with non-union personnel and to not reconvene in open session. Move to go into executive sense to discuss strategy, respect litigation. Next, chair declare that an open meeting may have detrimental effect on litigating position of the body to not to reconvene in open session. Regarding Chapter 214, Section 1B, persons shall have the right against unreasonable, substantial, or serious interference with their privacy. Superior Court shall have jurisdiction and equity to enforce such right and in connection therewith to award damages. We'll call vote. Russ Fox, aye?
Doug Morgan, aye.
Jason Perron, aye.